Apologies for absence.
Yes Chair, apologies for councillor Trevor Holmes.
Thank you very much. And in the two variation order of business, I've had an application to vary. Application B to be the first on the agenda. So that will just be the AVA 202 1071. We'll now move to the Edward P. meeting. Declarations of interests and/or lobbying?
There we go, I've got quite a few.
Sit back.
Okay, so I'll do the declarations first. We've got councillor Sherman has declared an interest in item six A, the Nether Farm application, set zero seven seven one. And she will be leaving the meeting and not taking part or voting. Councillor Dawn Harper has an interest in item six B, so zero one nine one, the conversion of the extension. And she will not be voting but will remain in the meeting. Councillor Harper also has an interest in item six C, which is zero four eight nine, the construction of the dwelling. And same again, she'll be remaining in the meeting but not voting. And then we've got the head of planning who is not in attendance but has a personal interest in items six A and six C. The lobbying councillor Emma Mokman and councillor Mick Wilson have put down for six A, Nether Farm. They've received an email but not opened it.
Oh, excuse me, could I just ask that all of you will be receiving the email afterwards? If you could open it afterwards and then it's not lobbying, okay? Yes Mick?
Thank you Chair, because it's important.
Just wanted to tell everybody here, I have heard that there's been some bad language and approaches to certain people here. I will not be accepting any bad behaviour during the evening tonight. Thank you very much.
Bad language.
Okay, so we're on number four minutes, minutes to be attached. Can we go through those for accuracy? Page one. Page two. Page three. And page four. Is that an accurate record? Can I have a second there? All those in favour? Thank you very much councillors. Number five, excluding the public, no application for anybody excluded. And number six, applications to be debated. So we're on six, we're on AVA 202 1071. Reserve matters, application following approval of AVA 2017 0645. Be sought for the appearance, landscape, layout and scale of two hundred dwellings, so said probably open space with Nether Farm. Okay. So I've got one, two, three, four, I've got four or five speakers. So what we're going to do is, obviously there'll be public speaking first. Oh yeah, sorry, sorry. So first we're gonna put the presentations from the public. Oh sorry, yeah, don't worry guys, move on. So there's gonna be a brief overview from the officer about the application, then we're gonna get public speaking, then we'll be looking for a resolution from the board. I don't get it right, if I'm sure. So I'm gonna ask the case officer to present the case.
Thank you Chair. So the members of this planning board will already be familiar with this application as it has been subject to the September planning board meeting where this application was deferred until further information was received from the coal authority and Derbyshire Wildlife Trust in relation to the scale of the development. So the original report has been as a result of dated, more specifically the additional text, you can find that included in section four of the report, that this relates to consultation responses, which then could follow up to Derbyshire Wildlife Trust response.
Hold on just, hold on just one second. Is, is, is everybody here okay?
Not really, and we can't see her either because there's a video machine. Could the lady not move along so we can actually see?
Hold on just a second, I'll...
I can't see you at all, you're so...
Hold on just a second. I'm not taking any questions. We'll sort out this about people being able to hear. We'll sort that now. Pass along the microphone. If you want stand up to deliver, you're, that would be lovely.
So I'll just try to see if you could see me. Sorry, I'll start again. So the planning board members will remember this application as it has been subject to the September planning board meeting where this application was deferred until further information was provided from the coal authority and Derbyshire Wildlife Trust in relation to the scale of the development. So the original report has been updated with the additional text added highlighted in the report bundle. More specifically, the additional text is included within section four of the report where, which deals with consultation responses. You can use these on pages twenty seven, twenty to twenty eight of the report bundle. As you can find additional text also on pages forty five to forty six, which largely deals with the condition, the outline planning permission. As mentioned previously, as part of the September planning board meeting, the submitted layout takes account of the mine entries, which will be carefully remediated and the exclusions on would be introduced as a result. There will be no structures built over these entries. I have asked the applicant to provide clearer plans to show where these mine entries are. So I don't know whether you, you can see it clearly, so these are exclusion zones, the blue blocks here. So there would be no structures above these exclusion zones. So the coal authority has accepted the proposed layout and all supporting information submitted as satisfactory and subject to a condition which ensures that the remedial mitigation measures included within the supporting information have been implemented prior to the commencement of the development. So this condition is added as condition nine on page fifty three of the report. In relation to ecology, the updated text would be found on pages forty two of the report bundle. These largely deals with the requirement of condition twenty of the outline permission. As mentioned in the report, the application is supported by the ecological mitigation and enhancement report. Derbyshire Wildlife Trust has been reconsulted again on this information after the September planning board meeting. So the trust has requested no further information and recommended a pre-convestment condition to carry out a walkover survey for protected species. Also, a condition has been agreed with our opponent to secure provision of hundred seventy five integrated swift bricks and twenty five integrated bat nest boxes, including a schedule of the five year ecological management action plan. And also hedgehog highways have also been included as part of the same condition. So these requirements are covered now as additional conditions ten and eleven, and these are on pages fifty four. So as a late presentation, I had an email from Mr Fryer, who was the speaker last time at the September planning board meeting. So he's raised a concern initially, and obviously in the same email, as regards to health and contamination on the site, but again, these are matters that are covered by the set of conditions of the outline planning permission separately. So just going to acknowledge that I have received this email. So the recommendation, recommendation is to approve, to permit the development subject to the original and additional conditions. So I have finished my presentation, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now it's time for the public to lay their say, and first up we've got, welcome councillor John McCabe to the meeting. And councillor McCabe, you do have five minutes within which to address the board.
This application never been passed in the first place, I think it has been a different administration at the time, it would have not come through. I'm very concerned about the wildlife issues on this site. What Derbyshire Wildlife has said, you know, the last bit is that we've put a few swift boxes on, we've put some edge out for the, for the, so people can get, well, not, not really, I don't think that's brilliant, you know, because just oh, when they investigate this site, that they have a really good look. And what I'd like to know, and probably an officer can tell me, if this is bad is set on this site, which could be, I don't know, because one was destroyed on Stanley Street very prior to the development, what happens if there's a bad set on the site? Does that stop the site from operating? I don't know. One of the other concerns is the pumping station. Nothing in this plan, nothing in this report telling me about the pumping station. Can, can this, can the network take it? Does it, you know, can I have an answer on that, you know?
The officer responds like, like...
Yeah, that's okay, yeah. On that issue, because this, this company, I'm telling you, I don't know if I do or not, I've done, I've done some work on one site and flooded, flooded houses. Are they a really good company, you know? I mean, it's not part of planning that application, but when we're looking at conditions later on, it'll be a deal to it. Another great concern is when we start work on these sites, from the very start, there should be a wheel washer. Soon as this application is go, soon as they go on that site, there should be a wheel washer on. I've got, I'm going back to Stanley Street, I'm, I'm making phone calls every day on Stanley Street due to the sludge, because we're not like a wheel washer, I'm sorry. We don't want to go back again onto this site where I have to, because of the conditions of what's happening, I have to literally blow the whole site up again and stop them from entry, because it's, it's a disgrace. And I think that should be, if it gets through, this should be one of the major decisions that a wheel washer is there from the very, very start, and it's really closely monitored, because we are suffering a lot in Somacoach with Stanley Street, we can talk in, we can make in phone calls every day, every day, sometimes to Ashford, because they do not clean the road, the road is slushed and dangerous. Hopefully they have a response on that. But as I can, I don't want to go with one of my fellow colleagues down here, and I mentioned, is the block the site after, because of what we're happening, how dangerous it was, and how it was affecting people in Somacoach. Thank you.
Thanks councillor. Now we've got Kenny Johnson. Yeah, we've got, welcome to the planning board.
Cheers.
We've got three minutes within to address the board.
Okay, I wonder how long it's taken members of the planning board to bring themselves up to speed on the many complex reports, opinions and documents on the planning portal for this application? I suspect the answer is they haven't. I suspect all you've looked at is the agenda and listened to officers, but you know best. I suspect the, apparently contamination issues were dealt with at tight line stage and conditions will ensure safe development were utter rubbish. The conditions haven't been met on the neighbouring sites, Stanley Street, and it will be exactly the same for Nether Farm. Amber Valley Borough Council's own scientific officer, Rowena Bailey, said, and I quote, "I still consider that further site investigations are needed before the reserve matters can be determined." She said, made these comments on the sixth, the twenty first of July last year and the twenty eighth of September. These investigations have never happened and this was the last comment she made about this application. In recent days, after the last planning board meeting on September the eleventh regarding this site, a document went online on the sixth of October. It is for drilling and grouting across the entire of the Nether Farm site. This is exactly what's happened on Stanley Street, this is what's caused the health issues, the email that the lady spoke about, it's outlined out by our expert. Our expert will not grace this meeting tonight because he's absolutely disgusted, but your environmental matters are your problem. It's your fault, you have to do it properly, you're responsible for it. Okay, obviously, we're just a bunch of nimbers who don't want housing, a bunch of nimbers who found a gun for hire and fought every application in close proximity to these landfills for ten years, because honestly, we've got nothing to bet to do with our time. And incidentally, we don't pay our expert, he helps us because of growing concerns about development in this area. But you know best, you know what you're doing, you know best. We have an outstanding report commissioned by Amber Valley Borough Council regarding the grouting up on Stanley Street. I doubt anyone was even commissioned to write it. Ben Adams certainly wouldn't name the author, but he knows what he's doing. The UK HSA investigated our concerns following ill, ill health of existing residents, and despite the fact that our expert sat down to allow his spouse to write her report, Ben Adams and Simon Gladwin didn't like the similarities, so the report was scrapped over a perceived conflict of interest, but they know best, they know what they're doing. Stephen and his spouse are both highly skilled consultants. Consider for a moment the reports were similar because they came to the same conclusions with the information put before them. I have no idea if the UK HSA are still writing a report. The correspondence sent to Amber Valley only states that they didn't find a causal link to residents getting ill, not that one does not exist. In an email from the UK HSA to Nigel Mills last Friday, they stated, "We have met with Amber Valley and agreed our role and remit going forward, and it is for Amber Valley to ensure that your environmental issues are considered." The MP is meeting with the UK HSA tomorrow to discuss the further implications of grouting up Nether Farm and the health implications on residents going forward. Do I need to remind members of the planning board and officers that you have a duty of care to residents, and should your decisions today cause significant harm or in fact kill someone, then corporate manslaughter charges will be sought against you? Thank you.
All love you.
Okay, we've now got councillor Stephen Tomlinson.
Yep.
Welcome to the planning board meeting, you have five minutes within which to address.
Yeah, I'll just start off by stating again that my views as councillor are not the views of the Holy and Southern Ghost Parish Council. In the meeting in September, a motion was brought forward. I will name the councillor, by councillor Emma Mokman. The motion was for reports from the coal authority, Derby Wildlife and the UK HSA. Your minutes are wrong. You have not included the UK HSA report in your minutes.
It was filmed.
And it's on film, it is comrade, and it is now with the monitoring officer to be investigated. So basically, as a board, you've ratified and approved false minutes. You've been told by UK HSA, by Dr Ben Rush, that there is no more investigations going on. That, again, is false. There are two doctors involved, Dr Ben Rush, who is representing Amber Valley, or is a liaison with Amber Valley, and Dr Simon Ferris, who is representing the people of Somacoach. Both have differing views on what is causing the illnesses that have happened so far. You've also, you've also said that they're not doing any more reporting on the land. Again, this is not true. The London office, the head office, which again, I have an email from our invest, are still doing a report, but the report is on hold while the perceived conflict of interest is being investigated on Sarah Dack, who was doing the main report. So it is still ongoing. The coal authority permit was issued over a year ago. There is four days left on that permit. That coal authority permit was issued on the understanding that the coal board had no knowledge of the landfill. This is their words. They're saying that LSO one didn't exist. It does exist. There has been a report, there are a hundred and seventeen different dioxins being found in Nether Farm already. Whether they're in minute context or not, a hundred and seventeen known dioxins. So this is where Kenny's point comes in. If you do pass this, knowing what you've been told and knowing what's in this report, corporate manslaughter is the least of your worries, because this council will be bankrupt and start paying our compensation.
Actually, five minutes.
Five, what, five minutes?
And even though you will probably ignore the local concerns and the local, and the experts, the people of Somacoach do not trust this board. We had previously a different administration that is still under investigation, the chair, the former chair, who is still under investigation for passing this on the street. We now know through Francis that this board is also under investigation for falsifying records.
Thank you councillor, I've not been arrested yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We now come to the planning board members. We start with the...
With that, I'm not leaving because I'm not legitising this meeting anymore.
Yeah, I'm lost on this. I don't want to know.
Are you leaving, can you please leave quietly?
No, yeah.
We've now got Mr Andrew Lawson.
Sorry, Rich. We're a bunch of idiots.
Welcome to the planning board. You've got three minutes within which to address the board.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you members for the opportunity to address it again tonight. As we've already heard, this reserve matters application was deferred at September's planning committee. On the basis that additional engagement was sought by members with the wildlife trust and with the coal authority. Now, the additional engagement with the wildlife trust and the coal authority related to conditions nineteen and twenty of the outline planning application, which required details to be submitted as part of the reserve matters application. So condition nineteen required mitigation, mitigating the risk from the former coal mining works, and condition twenty required a detailed scheme of ecological mitigation and enhancement of sites. I can confirm that although these details have been submitted and that they were before members at the previous committee, that the reconsultation for Derbyshire Wildlife Trust and the coal authority has nonetheless taken place over the last few weeks, and both have confirmed again, no objection, and that conditions nineteen and twenty of the outline application have both been complied with and can satisfactorily be discharged. Reference was also made, as we've heard, to the alleged report from the HSC in relation to contamination on the application site. No details or evidence of any such investigation or report have been provided by the objectors to either the applicant or to officers, and no such report is in front of members tonight. So as such, it's not a material consideration and a determination of this application. Therefore, whilst I really do understand the concerns raised by objectors, we're back in the position, we find ourselves in September's planning board, where A, we have a reserve matters application to be determined tonight; B, the vast majority of the objections raised in relation to the application relate to contamination; C, that the planning act clearly states that reserve matters are layout, scale, appearance and landscaping, and therefore there's no scope here to consider matters of principle such as contamination; and D, that any further issues relating to pre-construction contamination or works and investigation are to be dealt with via condition eighteen, which is attached to the outline planning application, to which the principal pollution officer has already stated there are no objections. Thank you. So to reiterate, respective matters relevant to this application, layout, scale, appearance and landscaping, officers' report confirms that the proposals by Bantones have been assessed against the development plan and found to be acceptable. On that basis, we would urge members to approve this reserve matters application. Thank you Peter.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we move to get the resolution from the, from the board. Councillor Mokman.
Yeah. Sorry, I've got a call. I listened to everything that everybody said, and I did do what people said in September, which was to ask for some more information. And first of all, I wanted to thank everybody that made that happen very quickly. That's what we asked for, and that's what we got. I might need to move officers' recommendations with an advisory note that the conditions come back to planning board for full public scrutiny.
Have we got a second there?
I've got a second.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, on the part about the bringing it back to, the conditions back to board, I'll take advice. And I'll, well, we'll, we'll keep it in the resolution as an advisory, but then I'll take further advice from officers. Okay. We've got councillor Orton to speak.
Yeah, I'd just like to have things clarified, because one of the speakers mentioned that the chairman was under investigation. I think it needs to be clarified if there is a chairman under investigation, because it certainly isn't me, and I was the past chairman, as you're aware, and I'm certainly not under any investigation in relation to this application. So I would just like things clarified, so that people can't go away with any false impressions.
Thank you very much for that councillor, and neither am I under investigation currently, so I think we can reflect that in a minute if it's that minute, if that's okay councillor. Thank you. And so, anybody else on the board want to speak? Councillor Atkinson.
Yeah, well, I can't support this application. I, I think the conditions aren't strong enough. There should be full and permanent remediation of the land and the surrounding land before any building starts. I'm really upset that it's being recommended for approval. I do think, as, as one of the speakers said earlier, that we have a duty of care to residents, and doing this on contaminated land is not acceptable in my eyes, so I'll be voting again.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. I've got councillor Mick Dammit.
We're all very concerned about the concerns the people here today. I'd just like the legal advice as to what, sitting here today, what legally I'm allowed to do, because I'm aware if I make a decision that's not legal, then it will just go straight to the insipidure and it'll be overturned. So I would really like that legal plan to, because my understanding is that I'm only allowed to look at the layout, scale, appearance and landscaping, which is, which is, which is not, should not be issues that the people here today are concerned about. So I would appreciate the clarity, and I would like to offer my sympathies to people of Somacoach for having all of these worries and concerns, but I'm concerned that I'm not allowed to rule on that, is that okay?
We'll come back, we'll come back to that. When, when we've gone through the board, we'll get the appropriate officer or legal expert to reply. Thank you councillor Dammit. Anybody else? We've got councillor Amina Burzum.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just sort of like to echo what's been said. And, yeah, clearly there are concerns, we do have sympathies with the worries of people living on and around the site. However, there are other issues that I am concerned with. The major one being the, that there is a single road into and out of the site. I am concerned that if that road gets blocked, that there's no alternative exit and entrance from, to and from the site. So that does concern me. I also have concerns that the land is slightly higher than the housing below, and I'd like to know what is being done to, to prevent flooding. I mean, we've seen a lot of flooding recently in the area where we live. I wouldn't like to see that repeated to the residents already on Burchford Lane. The, it is a, a green field site, and there are already people are saying that there were swifts and bats. I am pleased to say, to see that the trees are being protected, so I think that's good. If there are badgers on the site, can we be sure that they will be identified? And I don't, again, I don't know what will happen if, if they are found. I find it interesting that there are, they're going to put in hedgehog highways, so does that mean that there are hedgehogs on the site? I find it interesting that there are, um, they're going to put in hedgehog highways, so does that mean that there are hedgehogs on the site?
I'm sure I feel that's one of them.
Red listed species, I believe. So will they be looked for when the site is explored? And, um, I'd also like to know who's doing that and, um, will it be verified? That these, these animals, and if there are any other plants, I mean, because we are losing our plant life as well as our animal life. I mean, so I think with it being such a lovely greenfield site, that they need to be extra careful. So I think I would just like to know about those issues, thanks.
Okay, councillor Morton.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I wa- I just wanted to say that, um, I think it's quite difficult being on the planning board. I'm not expecting sympathy, I'm just saying it is quite difficult to be on the planning board. We can work with what we've got in front of us and that's what we can do. I would also just say that I don't believe that anybody should be threatened while they're going about their business, which is what all we're trying to do tonight. I have every sympathy and every empathy for people who are going through, uh, what they're going through at the moment. But a lot of what I've heard relates to Stanley Street and we're not deciding that tonight. We're deciding, uh, reserve matters, application for Nether Farm. And we've had a few people threatened with corporate manslaughter, well, we've all been threatened with corporate manslaughter. Other people have been threatened that were under investigation. And I would just like it on record that, um, I have every faith in this planning board to make the right decisions. And I also congratulate all the councillors on here who stepped forward to say that they will take that role on because it is needy. Um, and I await to hear the answers to the questions, but I stand by my resolution, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Atkinson.
My pleasure, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to note that when it comes to the vote, I'd like my vote against recording, please.
That's fine. Did, uh, Steve, did you want to speak now? Anybody else on the board want to speak? That, I don't know.
Yeah, and just basically to say that condition eleven is that we will actually see a full copy of the details of the five year ecological management action schedule. In conditions, we won't just get a brief.
We'll come back to, we'll get the officers and the legal people to get to respond to everything. And if they miss anything, just remind me. That's okay, councillor Hamilton. Anybody else from the board? No. So we'll come for the legal advice first.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. But there was some, you want some points about the scale.
Do you need to speak up?
Oh, sorry, sorry, I've got a minute.
Is that one working?
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good, sorry, thank you, everybody. Yes, um, it's, it's a difficult one for members tonight, as you know, as we discussed last time. We're here tonight essentially just to discuss what you deferred it on, which is the two reports. We shouldn't really be debating even the sort of scale and that, that is what we're here to do. We're not here to, to consider what was happening in outline. But again, like we've, obviously, all of us have listened to what residents have said and there's those concerns. But I'm telling you as a legal advisor that that's not something that is a material planning consideration that you can take into account tonight. Now, withstanding that, obviously, to give comfort, there is a condition on there that hasn't been discharged. Which obviously I've been speaking to the planning officer about, so there's that condition on contamination that still hasn't been discharged. That doesn't mean that there isn't certain groundwork and investigation works that can continue without that condition being discharged because that's just the way that it works. But no fundable or substantial development could get carried out until that is, but this isn't the forum for that. That's not what you're considering tonight, you're just considering, is that layout and is that scale? And going any further than that, obviously, like you say, you're putting us at risk of an appeal. And then the appealing inspector obviously will take it on from there. I think there was another question as well, wasn't there? You asked. Sorry? Oh, on the, on the conditions. Now, this is a difficult one because we have, we have a very, very limited window now. The government have said that we only have a very small window in which we can, um, obviously, if there's work to be done on it. But we don't bring conditions back to committee on the basis because it becomes deemed, they get, they get it in default if we don't go back within a certain period of time. So what I was suggesting to the chair that maybe, that obviously, if that could be in negotiation with the chair. So that he reports to, to, to the planning officer and then obviously reports back to planning members. If that'd be acceptable for the conditions that you mentioned, that, that's something that definitely could be accommodated.
Um, I'll come back to you. Does the officer, case officer want to reply to any of the other concerns and then we'll, we'll move on.
So, um, I've got a few notes here about the badger survey. Again, these are protected species, if there are any badgers, uh, badgers present within the site, we won't completely open that information publicly, make that information public. Because they're, these are the species that are most likely to be persecuted. However, we've got a condition that I have recommended, a condition ten I highlighted earlier, that requires reserve of the site for badgers. So that would ensure that any harm to protected species is avoided. In terms of ecology, again, the ecological management actions schedule, this will begin secured by our planning conditions. That will ensure that the, um, the, the measures and all these swift, um, uh, swift nests and bat nests and hedgehog highways. Again, uh, most likely, they are present. I'm not going to say exactly whether they are or not, but they are, that there would be measures available within the site, uh, within each development. So it's just, uh, say it again, sorry.
I just don't understand what you said about badgers.
John, sorry, you know, you've had your turn.
Sorry, I, I just didn't hear. So anyway, uh, we've got these, um, ecological management plan that will be, um, submitted. And obviously the applicant will have to ensure that they are carried out the development importance for that plan. In terms of the roads, um, we've got still can do, and the layout, I understand that your concern is about single road. Again, it's a highway safety matter and relying on highways authority at Derbyshire County Council to come back to us. And I, I went, um, numerous occasions to, to make, to request certain amendments. And, uh, generally, they are quite content with the layout. So, but we've got conditions four and five. Of the outline planning permission, which talks about, um. Estates, street junctions and residential estates, roads and footways. These, the layout for those that would need to be still submitted and approved, so it's conditions four and five. So we haven't, generally, this is the layout that we approve, but otherwise, we've still got conditions to ensure that this is complied with. In terms of, um. Pumping station and flood risk, um, this is, um, condition twenty four again. Something where we'll be dealing with under condition twenty four of the outline plan permission. So, um, again, against, again, about the remediation of the site and the coal authorities. So we've got that under condition twenty, so this is the report that we've got, I mentioned in my presentation. So, um, the requirement is, uh, to ensure that the applicant meets the requirements of the submitted. Supplemented jail, jail environmental appraisal, so that's condition nine. So I think it's, uh, wheel washers. Wheel washer, again, we've got, um, condition three of the outline plan permission. This is yet to be, again, discharged and does require, uh, a number of measures. So you've got, um, on-site turning space, routes and construction hours operating method of prevention of modern debris being carried onto highways. So this is yet to be approved as part of this description. So we will ask for wheel washers if the highways are content with that. So we will, I'll make a note. Okay, so hopefully I've understood the questions. Thank you.
Are there some more questions on the board? I've got, I'll have to look for you, I've got councillor Long.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just regarding badger sets, I mean, they're protected. If we find a badger set on land, what will happen?
They'll burn it out.
It's something that we would ask for Derbyshire Wildlife Trust to buy it and find. And then we'll give advice, um, and obviously the people, all will be dealing with that. They'll make sure that any badgers are removed in a, I would imagine, in the, um, correct way. So I'm an ecologist, so I can give advice, but I could check that for you and could get back to you later. The more details I'll find out.
And the hedgehogs too.
And the hedgehogs, yeah.
So, good to get, thank, thanks for that.
No, it's just very, very quickly, obviously, when you say about the badger sets, then, then obviously, there's going to have to be a report done and investigative work. So in terms of the process, I think that's what you mean about getting back to the councillor, don't you? But, but, but be assured, I think, I think what we're trying to say is that the investigation work will have to be undertaken before any development starts anyway. And our ecologists will have to be satisfied.
Okay.
Do you want to know where the badger set is?
No, we don't want to know.
Shall I tell you?
Thank you, be right in to us if you wish.
Yeah, it's no problem, I can show you exactly where it is.
It's all right, my friend. Right, anyone from the planning board? No? Oh, sorry, we can come back to you.
Yeah, just to make, just to amend the resolution, which was to take into consideration the legal advice, um, that those conditions come back to yourself.
Thank you very much. Is that okay? So with that, the second did that, yeah, so the amended resolution. Can I ask for all those in favour? Okay, councillor, those against?
Wasted time, didn't it?
Yeah, that resolution is passed, thank you very much. People are inside here who want to leave now that that.